Welcome to the Ordinary Meeting of Mount Isa City Council. The time is 9:00 AM and I now declare this meeting open. Mount Isa City Council would like to acknowledge the traditional owners of the land in which we meet, the Kalkadoons, and pay respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. Please note that this Ordinary Meeting of the Mount Isa City Council may be livestreamed and recorded in accordance with council's recording of council meetings policy. As a visitor in the public gallery, your presence may be recorded. By remaining in chambers, it is assumed that your consent is given if your image is inadvertently broadcast. I'd like to kick off today's proceedings with a prayer from Pastor Dave. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mary. Let's pray. By the God, we are grateful for our city and this place we get to live in. Counselor, pray for the council. Those who are involved in making decisions regarding the lives of people in this country, pray your hand upon the board of directors of this town and what understanding and what it is. God for this city. Cover them right now with prayer. Help and family and our city thrive and be concerned about this council.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you Pastor Dave and thank you for the calm words. Okay, that takes us now to item three, which is apologies and leave of absence. And I believe we have Counselor Tully attending but just running late. Would someone like to move the motion that we accept Counselor Paul Streton on the livestream?
McCray, I would like to move that motion that we allow Counselor Streton to join the meeting.
Thank you for that, Peter, Counsel McCray. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Counsel Fortune. All those in favour? And that's carried. That now takes us to public participation and we have two in the gallery today. Welcome. And we'll start with Godfrey Creutz. Can we get a microphone to Godfrey?
Thank you. Miss Mayor, Counselors, CEO. I've got three things. Two of them are service requests. One I mentioned in December, but no work has been done and that's cleaning up the old cemetery. I request that it be cleaned up and then put on a regular program. Not just do it now and then nothing happens. We're going into our hundred-year celebrations and that's not a good sign that we leave parks and grounds in a bad way. The other one is the Tharapata Way. I've walked there in the past quite often and I participate now Saturdays in the park run, but I walk, not run. And that needs cleaning up as well. Somebody, I suppose it's the council, ran a lawnmower along there, a ride-on mower and that was it. There is an exercise area there. There's a native garden there which has not, to my knowledge, seen any service in the last year. So please put the Tharapata Way also on your regular work list, not just once. There is another problem is that the concrete in places has lifted. Please, as time permits and money permits, make it flush. Either grind it out or level out the steps on there. It's not a good thing. Again, I would expect that we will guests come and do park runs from down south where the running conditions and the places where they run are so much better than here. We don't have to be the poor neighbour all the time for little things like that. So they're my two service requests. I'm sorry. The next one is my job request or service request from the 27th of August to change the exit sign, no exit sign at the PC by C. I'd like to have it recorded that at no time in all my visits since that time have I asked for widening of the roads, changing of the roads in and out. I just simply asked for a no exit sign to be changed into a give-way sign. Now, I did have a letter back from the major project officer saying that council cannot remove traffic signs without proving the change meets design standards. Putting a no give-way sign on a piece of road which is relatively short, which is not being used by cars that go at high speed, what I think it's not really a big deal because we have many, many narrow roads, bridges, side roads, smaller roads, railway crossings where we have a give-way sign. It doesn't say no exit, go around 10 kilometres. It says give-way and it's easily overseen. Anyway, I came back and to the next meeting and stated my request. And then after that, I had a letter from the acting CEO saying that the entrance is not...
Excuse me, Godfrey. Can I just take a call? It's an urgent one. I'm just going to hand over the chair to the deputy mayor at the moment. Won't be a moment?
Thanks, Godfrey. Just proceed.
The letter said, among other things, entrance is not wide enough for two lanes. I know that. I did not ask for that entrance to be widened. I asked for a sign to be changed. I think I belaboured that point since August and I've said enough on it. If the council wants to change it, I'd be very happy if that... I can live with it because I'm not parking inside PC by C. I park at the skate park. It's only 10 metres extra and I won't get a ticket from the police for going the wrong way. Thank you.
Thanks, Godfrey. I could just advise you that that road has a combination of things we need to consider. And one of them is it's a state road, but it's also the islands have been in place and they're quite an odd arrangement, the islands and the access through that. And PC by C in those terms is quite a new facility. It's been around a while now, but it's a lot newer than what the roads and the access to it are. But I do believe, you know, the administration has a response to you. I don't know whether you've received it or not, but yeah, okay, advising some of that information. I'll hand back to the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. And look, Godfrey, I just want...
Understand. Yeah, understand that. But we can't alter anything until we have a plan, basically, is the council's responsibility. Well, that's legislated. That's our responsibility. If it was just put back, it should have been all right, yeah. Okay, well, we'll take that on board and it'll be fed into the...
I would like to have it noted that I did not ask any road changes to be made, just the sign to be changed.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Godfrey, thank you very much for raising those issues. One of the good things that you did was you actually brought forward those issues prior to coming to the meeting. So we were able to pass them on to our director, Stephen Jewell. And I know that they have been looking into those issues, which is fantastic because sometimes we don't see everything that's happening in the community. And I know you've been here before and raised these issues. So if you can leave that with us, we will look into those issues and we will get back to you. And if you don't hear from us, I'm happy for you to ring me and ring the reception and say the mayor said that she'd take a call from me. So please do, Godfrey. Oh, you did? Okay. Well, I'll introduce you to Christie and she'll give you her direct number and then we can liaise. Yep. No, well, thank you. And I really appreciate you coming in and raising these issues. It's really important that the community, you know, has a voice and also lets us know what's happening because we don't always, you know, I haven't... I've been to the old cemetery probably twice in my lifetime, which is, you know, I didn't know existed for years. And it is something that we should be looking after. So it's... I'm glad you brought it up.
I'm retired. I am active. I do walk around Mount Isa and I do things. And when you walk or bicycle, you see more than what you do when you have to go to a meeting and you only have two minutes left in the car.
That's great. And that's great. And that's what we need. And we do have a... I call it a complaints form or... But it's really more letting us know what's happening. So if you do see anything, we welcome that information coming through to council, whether that's by email or complaints form. And I'd suggest an email and a complaints form before a phone call because sometimes a phone call, not everything always filters back. So something tangible that we can go back to and say, yep, that was put through on this date. But yeah, really appreciate that. So thank you, Godfrey. Yeah, thank you so much. Really appreciate that. Now we have... Oh, sorry, Counselor.
Through the chair, do you want to answer in response to Tharapata Way?
Yep, sure.
I don't know if you were in the room, but Godfrey brought up Tharapata Way. I don't think we actually have the land tenure. That was a project done by a different group that actually put in that concrete, put that garden in and put that exercise equipment there. Council is maintaining it, but it's not ours. I understand that belongs to a different organisation. And we have patch of concrete. I don't think it's our responsibility.
Well, thank you, Counselor. Through the chair with Counsel McCray, that's correct. It wasn't a council initiative. It was an organisation that are now disbanded. And council have even the play equipment, I'm not play, sorry, exercise equipment was put in through the organisation, but they're now disbanded. So it actually isn't council's responsibility, but they do do it when they can, when time permits. Because as everyone's aware at the moment, the grass is growing at a great rate and we haven't been able to get around to everything. So...
Thank you, Counselor Coghlan. And we might look into that whole thing because it's great that another organisation has put this forward. But, you know, it may now land with council to maintain this and I guess we need to have some clarity on that.
Because I started at Park Run and it was absolutely disgraceful at the beginning. So council has done a lot of work since Park Run has started. I know it does look overgrown and it's a bit muddy, but it has a lot improved from when this first started.
All right. And sorry, Godfrey, I'm happy to have a chat with you after. Or we even get one of our staff members to have a chat? Yep. Yep. No. And we will definitely look into that. I think you're right. I think, you know, organisations come and go and now it's a permanent fixture. So... Yep. No, thank you, Godfrey. Really appreciate that. Okay, so that takes us now to our second public speaker today. Is it Peter Bolger? Good morning.
Hi, yes, Mayor and Counselors for allowing your presentation today. It's just around an easement corner of the intersection of Spence, Rebecca and Enid Street. I keep being told by officials, I will get onto the owner. It's state government land. And all this money comes under the Science and Environment Department, which is based in Cairns. They don't care about Mount Isa. And Mount Isa City Council should be applying to the state government to get this funding for these easements that are coming out into the Science and Environment Department in Cairns. Tens of thousands of dollars they're receiving and they're not doing anything with it. They put a security fence. I supplied photos to the council. Should have on your computers. I addressed the council six to eight months ago about the same issue. Nothing's changed since. The security fencing is still there. Someone's paying for that security fencing, which is not cheap per month, which is Cairns that will be paying for it. And so I stress, or I ask, Mount Isa City Council to put pressure on the state government that they get the money, not Cairns, to service these easements. There's another one in Kakota Road, two doors up from my place. That went on for six months. Finally, someone came there with a ride-on mower and a whip and snipper. And I thought, why isn't the council doing this? And I spoke to him. He said he was engaged by Cairns to do it. So they're spending minimum amount of money when the pressure is put on them. And this corner of Spence, Stanley, Enid and Rebecca is a perfect example. It's been like this for 12 months and nothing is getting done. So Mount Isa should insist they get all the funding, tens of thousands of dollars involved, and they can then look after it.
Thank you, Peter. Do we have an officer who wants to respond to this? I'm looking at Stephen Jewell.
Through the chair, can I just say that I have previously in workshops and briefings asked for this to be done over since the beginning of the term that we should be, and I do agree with you wholeheartedly, we should be putting more pressure on the state to fix all their assets here because they just seem to, like you say, not care. They're quite happy to spend the money on the coast. But to get funding for Mount Isa City Council to do it, I don't believe is the answer because we've got crews, our Parks and Gardens crews can't keep up with what they're doing now. So it's a state government asset. They should be made to look after it. So we do need to come down a lot harder on this.
Thank you, Counselor. And I'll open it up to Stephen Jewell, but I was under the impression that with a lot of the council assets, that Mount Isa City Council maintains them for them. So I'll pass on to Stephen.
Yes, we do. It tends to be a little bit of backwards and forwards. They have the responsibility. Usually we say, are you going to clean it up? It goes backwards and forwards. They'll often then ask us to do it. We will do it. We will charge them. But we need a better setup than that. So we don't need all the administrative effort either side. We just need to mow, tidy it up. So we'll try and come to some sort of memorandum of understanding. The one down in Edes Street, there's a stormwater pipe running through the middle of that, which is obviously council's and that collapsed. And that's the reason for the fencing, which has made it very hard to clean up. So we'll address the stormwater drain in the capital program next financial year. That will at least tidy up that part of it. It won't help the mowing frequency or schedule, but that's a separate issue. It means the fencing can go after that.
Thank you.
So are you saying Mount Isa City Council is paying for that security fencing?
I don't think we are, but...
Yeah, well, no one... It's going around in a circle. Let's get to the nitty-gritty and put pressure on the state government that Mount Isa gets the money. You're saying they can't cope with the work they've got now. Well, the money that Cairns is getting to do the work that they're not doing, they could put another staff member on to clean just the easements and nothing is going. Another 12 months will be exactly the same.
Excuse me, Peter. Well, I think we will make this a priority to get this mowed. And if it costs council rather than the state government, I think this is a priority at the moment because we are being overgrown. But I will take that on advisement with the CEO. But I think it's something we should look at. It probably wouldn't be a big job if we attack it right at this moment, looking at the photos you've sent. So if we can get this all mowed and cut back initially, would you... That will certainly help. And then we'll look at the fencing as part of that.
But can I look at the funding? That Mount Isa gets more funding to do this?
Definitely.
Which wouldn't be the right path if it's state land.
This is one of the things that council lobbies for all the time, for extra funding. And we're very good at having hat in hand and asking for funding. But definitely, if the state government should be paying for this, we'll be asking for that.
All right. Thank you. Just one other thing. I'd like to congratulate the council on Holding Australia Day tomorrow. Hope it's highly successful. Hope it's well-publicised. And congratulate on the council holding it tomorrow on the 26th of January. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. And look, I'm really looking forward to tomorrow. We're kicking off at 7:00 AM and it's a bit of a sausage sizzle breakfast. So if anyone wants to come along, it's going to be a lovely start to the day. We'll then be doing the Australia Day awards. And, you know, there are so many people in that community who do so much. There's no doubt. A lot of people are under the radar and they give a lot of their spare time. So it's a great time to come along and recognise those who do a lot. And whether you are going to win an award tomorrow or you've just been nominated, you know, what an honour that your city has picked you for the work you do. So... And then, of course, we have the citizenship ceremony, which is Ask Any Mayor in Australia. That's the best part of the job. And yeah, I love doing the citizenship ceremonies. It's great to see so many people who are just so happy to become Australian, you know, and it really just, it's fantastic. And for a lot of people who don't know this, you know, on the 26th of January, and it was in the 1940s, every Australian, including our Indigenous, all became naturalised together on that date. So why the 26th of January, you know, has different meanings for different people. Prior to that date, we were all British subjects. And then on that Australia Day, every single person in Australia was nationalised. So it is a momentous occasion if you want to think that way. So anyway, I hope to see you there and looking forward to it. And I know our staff have put a lot of effort into it. So thanks very much to all the council staff.
Thank you very much and congratulations to the council for holding it.
Thank you so much. All right. Well, that actually takes us now back to our agenda. And that would take us now to item five, which is confirmation of the previous minutes meetings. Would any councillors like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the chair, I'd like to move the recommendation that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 14th of December...
Can I just point of order, Counselor? CEO's advised me that the recommendation is not correct and that we should go with another recommendation. So I can read that out if you like.
We're happy for you to read it, Counselor.
Yeah, so the revised recommendation is that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 14th of December 2022 are confirmed as a true and correct record.
Could you repeat, please?
The recommendation is that the minutes of the ordinary meeting held on the 14th of December 2022 are confirmed as a true and correct record.
Can I get a second for that motion? Can I get a second for that motion?
Through the chair, why would the recommendations not be adopted?
I'll second that motion and then we'll explain why, if that's okay. So that's... Once I've seconded it, now we can discuss it. I'll get the CEO just to explain that.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did send an email after the last meeting on this issue, but we haven't picked it up. So I'm responsible for that. The issue is that the only decision that you're making regarding the minutes of the previous meeting is that they are accurate. Hence the words, they are confirmed as a true and correct record. What you're not doing is adopting the recommendations of the previous meeting. They are actually, they're not recommendations. The decisions taken at the previous meeting on the 14th of December are just that. They're resolutions. They are final decisions. And you're not, we're not waiting until today to effectively adopt them. They were adopted back on the 14th of December. Does that make sense? So it's really just putting the proper form, the resolution, which is today only about confirming that the minutes are an accurate record. And they may not be. There might be some errors. In which case, the words would be that they are confirmed as a true and correct record with the exception of the following changes. So if that makes sense, just those historical words in that resolution don't reflect what it is that you are doing. What you're not doing is adopting recommendations from a previous meeting. They were adopted when the gavel came down effectively, when the vote is taken.
So the recommendation will be changed for next meeting?
Yes, it will be. And my apology for the fact that it wasn't. But that's the explanation. And in an ideal world, I would have explained this to you again prior to today. There's an old email on it, but that doesn't matter. That's the explanation, if that makes sense.
Is there any other question? Anyone got any questions on this one? All right. All those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so that takes us now to item six, which is the actions from the previous council meeting and 6.1, which is the outstanding actions from previous council meeting as of the 24th of the first 2023. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, that council receives and notes the outstanding actions from the previous council meetings at the 24th of January 2023.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, Counselor Fortune. Any comments on this one? All those in favour? And that's carried. Okay, so item number seven is declarations of conflicts of interest. Are there any councillors here that have any declarations of conflict of interest in regard to this agenda? No? No?
No.
Perfect. Thank you. That brings us to item eight, which is the mayoral minute. And I have a couple of things I want to bring up. Yesterday, the Prime Minister of Australia announced changes to liquor licensing in the Alice Springs. And I want to inform the community that I will be making contact with the Prime Minister's office and also the Premier's office on how this may impact Mount Isa. At the moment, I am sort of calling the community to arms and asking them to have a zero tolerance for people behaving in an antisocial behaviour. If you see people drinking in public, please report it to the police. If you see people legally camping, report it to the police. If you see people, youth, walking around the streets late at night, please report it to the police. If you have property damage, vandalism, attempted break-ins, kids not at school, even littering, please report it. If you live near a house where people are behaving in antisocial behaviours, report it to the police, the council, and if appropriate, state government housing. Mount Isa City Council is putting a plan together at the moment to bring all key stakeholders, agencies, to look at the antisocial behaviour and youth crime. And we are going to put together recommendations that we can take to the state and federal government. It's important that we go with, to them, with solutions that suit Mount Isa. At the moment, our reporting statistics are low. And in 2021, domestic violence statistics were added to Mount Isa's reporting stats, which really did bump us up to the highest we've been since 2001. But when I sat across from the Minister of Police, there was... I saw paperwork to show me that our reporting stats are low. And I know that there are a lot of people who feel very hopeless at the moment. But we can take some power back and that is having a zero tolerance to any antisocial behaviour or crime. As a community, we need true statistics with the current situation. Um, as a community, we need true statistics with the current situation. And this will help support us getting more resources, including police, and support to intervene in the current situation. This is our city and we absolutely have a right to expect that all those who choose to visit and live here abide by the law, and everyone is welcome. But we expect you to respect Mount Isa, its community and country. Further to my mayoral minute, I also would just like to bring up a, um, a housing development that the state government is, um, hap- happening on the corner of, um, Nineteenth Avenue and Brilliant Street. Now, um, councillors, as you're aware, there's a statutory notification received from the Department of Energy and Public Works concerning a proposed development on the corner of Nineteenth Avenue and Brilliant Street in Parkside. So for those who don't know, uh, Brilliant Street and Nineteenth Avenue is on the corner, across the road from St Joey's. It's next door to Meals on Wheels. And it's also, um, so basically it's near two primary schools, three kindies and one after-school care. Um, as, uh, mayor, I certainly wish to encourage the provision of, um, uh, new housing stock, um, for government employees in Mount Isa. However, I'm particularly concerned about the location of the proposed development. Ideally, we would be, um, ideally, Mount Isa City Council would be granted a short extension of time to conduct some local community consultation, um, to inform the council's response. Um, before I put the resolution forward, I'd just like to, um, have some feedback from councillors on their, their thoughts. The actual, um, proposal is thirty one-bedroom units. Um, and again, it is between, um, it's next door to a kindergarten, um, Captain Cook Oval and across the road from St Joey's. Any councillors like to weigh in on this one?
Yep. Oh, I won't be supporting the resolution at all. I think it's a great design. I don't, I don't believe traffic will be affected because it is, to my knowledge, for workers who will be doing shift work. So you're not gonna, the traffic flow would go out along, uh, Fourth Avenue. Um, it's not going to affect, the only people it will affect is that the school has used that area as a bit of a parking zone. It's not full all the time. It's only full on the first day of school or first day back when there's a lot more parents there. There is other land there that the school could purchase and, um, put a, a car park on, a secured car park. Um, and I, I think it's, it's a great initiative. It's going to clean up an area that, that it looks overgrown, it looks disgusting, there's vermin in it. Um, and it also would make the fact that we haven't got a lot of, um, options for workers with Queensland Health, police and school teachers, the accommodation. We all know there's not accommodation in Mount Isa, so this is a great initiative to get people here, to show them what our lifestyle is like. And hopefully, they will carry on and continue to be here for maybe two to three years, maybe five years, you don't know. This has happened before, so I think it's a great initiative by the state government. So I won't be supporting your resolution.
Councillor, you may have extra information that we don't have. At the moment, we don't know who's gonna be the tenants and we don't know if it's temporary accommodation. We, we were guessing.
When, when you say temporary, what do you mean by temporary? What, what's your?
Um, maybe fly-in, fly-out accommodation.
There's fly-in, fly-out accommodation for health workers all over Mount Isa. They have houses everywhere, they've got Tropic Air Estate. Um, a lot of people have fly-in, fly-outs.
Um, councillor, I'm not debating that, I'm saying we don't know what the rationale is for the accommodation. So we don't know if it's, if it's social housing, we don't know who's actually.
It's not social housing, it says on the development that it's for government employees. So that's not social housing. If it was social housing, I would say no.
All right, anyone else got a view?
Madam Mayor, thanks. Yeah, so, um, uh, I concur with, um, councillor Coglan. Uh, I have, um, reached out to public housing and asked them what it's to be used for and they've advised that it's for, um, Queensland Health and it's for their employees. Um, that's yet to be confirmed, but that's my information. Um, and I believe that's, uh, sort of noted on the plan that it's government employee housing as well. Um, I'm quite happy with the development as it sits, um, and the plan. I believe that the houses that are being built are triplets, uh, and there's, there's three per, per house. But they're also, um, placed on nine thousand square metres of land, so they're, they're no more than any other, uh, domestic residence. Um, when you, when you lay it out, um, so there's ten houses, ten buildings, um, on the site over nine thousand metres, which allows about eight hundred or nine hundred square metres for each, each construction, um, which I'm quite happy with, so that's no, no bigger than any other, um, set of residences that you would see along there. Otherwise, I believe that block's gonna sit there for a long, long time and be unused, um, if we can get it developed. Um, I, I'm not aware of anybody else interested in the land, so I think, um, we should not try and, um, hold this up in any way. Um, and I think we should, should, should support it going forward.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, any other comments?
Yeah, through the chair, I think we've been advocating for, um, improved housing conditions for government workers and more housing to attract quality staff to our area for as long as I've been on council. So I'm really, um, pleased to see this development. I don't think the traffic is gonna be as much as an issue, of an issue as we first thought because there, um, isn't extra access through Nineteenth Avenue up along Fourth, so they don't necessarily have to go down, I think it's Twenty-third Avenue. Um, so, yeah, I'm, I'm in full support of the development.
And any other comments? Any other councillors with any other comments? No? Um, there is two entries, one is on Brilliant Street and one is on Nineteenth Avenue, so that, that, there, so that will impact on Brilliant Street. I guess what I'm saying is that, I'm not saying I'm against the, um, the building. I would like to, um, extend the time period, which is only in three weeks. And again, there's been no consultation with Mount Isa City Council on the location or even the build, which is really, I think, unusual. I have reached out to the hospital and the board. They tell me that they had no input on the location and maybe they're not as, um, maybe not the best allocation for them. Um, so at the moment, we can't, I'm, I'm still trying to track down who actually picked the location. So if they haven't gone to the local hospital board and they haven't gone to the local council, we may have someone sitting in Brisbane, looking at Google Maps, picking locations for accommodation, which is not really what we want as a city. We wanna be working with, um, no matter who they are, to, uh, make sure that what happens in our city is for, you know, long-term and best stock. At the moment, having thirty-one bedroom units, now the, the deputy mayor's correct, it's ten, um, structures or buildings. Now, the triplets he's talking to are three-bedroom units per structure. So we have thirty-one bedroom units. The, the clientele or the people who live there will never use the two primary schools, three kindergartens and the after-school care that is across the road, which is.
Unless they're teaching.
Excuse me, I'm just speaking, councillor McCrae. Um, if, if this was teachers' accommodation, like you interjected, I would be full supportive of this. Fully supportive, but at the moment, we, we really don't know if this is a housing, uh, uh, as in health? Is it teaching, is it a mixture? And there has been no, um, clarification whatsoever from anybody. So at the moment, we're going in blind, and I, I mean that, unless someone's got information that was not given to council. But, um, we're going in blind with, um, a, a complex with thirty units, with no more information. And I do believe that as part of the local government act, as councillors, we are to do meaningful engagement. And this is not giving us the opportunity to, um, once this is built, it can't be removed. So we really need to take, uh, and a, a couple of weeks' extension is not gonna slow up anything. But it will give us the knowledge that we need to have as councillors to be able to, um, look at this. And I think that's fair enough. But anyway, I'm proposing and I'd like to put the motion forward.
Can I just say something to reiterate what you, oh, to respond to something you said? If it's, um, full of teach, if it's full of nurses and doctors, they will be contributing to the community in that if any of those children in any of the schools, kindies or whatever get sick, they're the ones that look after them, they're the ones that care for them. So it's, it's a good idea, like, and consultation, I've spoken to people in the area and they have not got a problem with it.
You made way three or four days ago, there's no way you've done meaningful community consultation, let me finish.
There's only about five houses on the street.
Let me finish, councillor, you have, you, we have a code of conduct to follow and in the meeting rules, I'd just like to remind you, everyone has a say, I'll give you time. But I'm not saying that we can't build thirty-one bedroom units in Mount Isa. I'm talking about the location. And so far, you haven't given me a good reason why that location is a great location because certainly no one's gonna knock the door from the, from the primary schools to go and get medical attention. It, I'm saying the location. And maybe council could do a land swap, we might have a better spot for them that we could offer them, maybe right next to the hospital, and they could do a land swap with us and we could actually take on that block. And, and keep in mind, there's a big park there that we could add to with more, more things for the community, you know? And just at the moment, that, um, Captain Cook Park is so well utilised. So there could be, uh, there could be a lot of opportunities from just having a simple conversation. And maybe at the end of this, we go, yeah, it is a good spot and we, we, we are happy to go ahead with this. But at the end of the day, I don't wanna be, um, looking at people in the community and saying we didn't bother to do community engagement.
Through the chair.
And I'm happy for you to respond, councillor Coglan.
Through the chair, I disagree with what you're saying. Um, it is a good spot, there is not a lot of land in Mount Isa and it's a good spot, let me finish.
Yeah.
It's a good spot for it, I'm fully in support of it, um, I've made my point and I won't be supporting your resolution.
Councillor, um, there has to be, you haven't given me a good reason, you're saying a good spot. That's not a reason. Give me a good reason why it's a good location and I'm not being facetious, I'm really asking you, why is it a good location?
Because there's no other spots in Mount Isa for it, there's no other places in Mount Isa that could build thirty-one bedroom units like that. And that's my reasoning, that land's been there for many years, no one's built anything on it, it looks atrocious. I won't be supporting your resolution.
Thank you. Well, I, I feel like we've had enough discussion, I'll put the resolution forward and it's up to you.
Through the chair, I've been waiting to ask you a question.
Thank you, councillor McCrae.
As you said, were you, um, did you contact the Queensland Health Board and they weren't supportive of the project? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, I did. They were, uh, sorry, you put sort of that sort of words in my mouth, no, I contacted.
No, I'm just asking you to clarify, that's what you said.
No, no, I emailed the chair, councillors, please refrain from laughing and giggling, this is serious. I contacted the chair of the Mount Isa Board and also the CEO of the hospital board. And they said that they haven't had any input into this location. And they actually referred me back to, um, the Department of Energy and Works. So they're saying they didn't have any input into this location.
But were they supportive of it?
Well, the, um, overlying effect was they would prefer somewhere closer to the hospital.
Okay, thank you.
So that was their response, they would prefer somewhere closer to the hospital. And I don't wanna throw anyone under the bus, councillor, it's not funny.
It is funny because none of the board even live here, so I, you know, like, like they would know a spot. The only thing they could do is look on Google Map as well.
Well, they come here every month, councillor, and at least they, um, understand a bit more of the community than someone living in Brisbane. And all I'm saying is, uh, I'm enjoying the, the good debate, let's keep it respectful. Um, I just think what, what does it cost us to, um, extend this for a month and do some community engagement? What does it cost us? You know, and, and at the end of the day, we may say, yes, the community's right behind us, let's make sure this happens. But at the moment, I'm not so sure that that's, um, and, and councillor, I'm sure there is other spots we can find as a council. All right, I'm gonna move a motion and, uh, we'll see if anyone seconds it. And my, the motion I'd like to, uh, move is that, that council seeks an extension of time to consider and respond to the proposal by the state government to construct thirty-one single-dwelling units on the state government-owned land in Nineteenth Avenue and Brilliant Street, Parkside, to enable council to further consider the appropriateness of the location of the proposal. The impacts of the local government area via processes of community consultation and consideration of whether a more suitable site can be identified, um, proceed through a process of, sorry, process of council and state government cooperation. I'd also like to add to that, that the response to the proposed proposal be the subject of a council consideration and the decision via a special council meeting. Can I get someone to second that motion?
So through Madam Mayor, what councillor Tully's doing is declaring a declarable intrusion.
Yes.
So then becomes a decision for the councillors to whether it is comfortable that you stay in the room, that, that, that perceived conflict, if you like, is not so, um, significant that it's gonna, um, not be in the public interest that you do stay in the room. So I just need a, we need a resolution about that.
What would you like to do, would you like to, a resolution to see if you can stay in the room?
No, I'd rather just leave, so then I've got no, uh.
Well, that's, that's a matter for you, if you, if you make that declaration, leave, no one can stop you.
Yep.
But the, the technical thing is that, having made a declarable interest, it's not a prescribed one where it's compulsory, compulsory that you're in the room.
I'd rather leave, thanks, Don.
Okay, so you can do that?
Yep.
Thank you, councillor Tully.
Decision.
Okay, I do, um, do I have a second for that motion? Okay, so in light of the fact that I don't have a second for that motion, that, that, um, motion is now, um, lapsed. And can we, please bring in councillor Tully? Ah, yes, please. Open, yeah. It's a bit noisy, but at least it shows we're open meeting. Okay, so that now takes us to item nine, which is the reading and consideration of correspondence, which we have nil. And that then takes us to item number ten, which is executive services reports. And ten point one, the subdivision concept plans over lot twelve on SP two-five-nine-zero-double-three. Would someone like to move the council's, um, recommendation?
I'll move, Madam Mayor, the council approved the preliminary overall structure plan, final stage one concept plan and collector and local road plans prepared by Saunders-Havill Group for the subdivision of land described as lot twelve on SP two-five-nine-oh-three-eight and approve a budget change for traffic engineering consult, consulting services.
Thank you, can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Um, would anyone like to speak, um, about this motion?
Thanks, Madam Mayor, uh, look, I, I think, um, this is, uh, long overdue and it's a good thing to see council taking the first step towards, uh, developing what's known as the Glider Port, um, at, at least in the first stage. Um, and, uh, there's been a lot of effort and a lot of work by the administration and the tech services and also by councillors through input into, into the design that's showing up at the moment on the plan. And I'm sure that will be, be tweaked a little bit as we go forward, but, um, um, yeah, I'm very, very happy to support this.
I can actually see room for thirty-one bedroom units here. But, um, uh, one of the things I am getting from the community as, um, feedback is there seems to be, um, some rumours and gossip that this is, we are developing, um, state government housing for social housing. What is our plan in regard to that? Do we have a sort of a?
Um, Madam Mayor, what I'd suggest, I, I'd take that question on notice and give you a proper answer. Uh, I'm, I'm not familiar enough with the proposal, the history of it, so, but to give that question, um, justice, I'd like to just take it on notice and give you a written answer between now and the next meeting.
Thank you, because, you know, one of the reasons, um, I was, um, you know, thought this proposal was a great idea is because we wanted, um, health to buy there, we wanted the police to buy there. We wanted, um, um, all different forms of state and federal government to have. we wanted all different forms of state and federal government to have homes in this area. So at the moment, we're looking at some substantial lots that may not end up in this area. So, you know, are we looking to have, what's going to be there? Is it going to have a covenants on this like it did in Healy Heights? I guess that's a question I've also got, because at the moment, we're going to be asking people to spend six hundred thousand dollars on a brand new home and I think they have a right to know what the plans are for the entire block and who their neighbours will be because at the moment, you could end up living next door to thirty-one bedroom units without so much as someone knocking your door to engage with council.
Through, through the chair, the recommendation moved partly says it's a final stage one concept plan. So the concept is the plan that we're approving today. Part of the overview says that it's a total of ninety-nine residential allotments, ranging in area between six hundred and twelve eighty-eight metres square. Stage one entrance and exit from existing roads being Burton Street and Tracy Road. The advantage on that is that it alleviates a lot of traffic in Wright Road. There's also a connector road across to Duchess Road that is, eases traffic into Healy Heights in that part of Healy, a lot. Lorraine Gibson Park will remain and it's incorporated into the design. There will be a provision for a childcare centre, a neighbourhood centre and health and medical facilities. And there's also that over nine thousand square metres of natural drainage area there. So a big difference between this concept plan and the previous one, which you noted is that the services are right next to the previous one, the services have to be put into this one. And it's the beginning of the development of the Glider Port area that previous councils have taken on board for the expansion, if you like, of Mount Isa. And again, I would go back to the recommendation that it's approval of a preliminary overall structure plan for a final stage one concept plan and collector and local roads. So we're just approving today the concept and the overall structure plan. So there's nothing else that, anything else that comes in later on will be a boon for Mount Isa. Any, any construction. Currently, it's ninety-nine residential allotments, it could be changed or something else down the track. There's provision for a childcare centre and neighbourhood centre and health and medical facilities. So it's, to me, it's a, it's for the future of Mount Isa and it's something that us as councillors should be supporting and getting on with business, I guess, of, of natural sort of evolution of Mount Isa. You know, the long-term sustainability of our community. So I'll have you to second that motion that's put up and support it.
Thank you councillor Fortune. And again, I do see a lot of land there that could be used for thirty-one bedroom units. So we aren't landlocked at all. All right, if there's nothing else to be said, all those in favour, and that's carried.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, are you voting now or no, have we gone away from that? Remember last, last year, we had a whether you have to vote or not vote?
Oh, that's right, I think the previous CEO went and got legal advice on that, didn't he?
I think you have to vote, is all I'm saying.
Sorry, who, you're saying the mayor or?
Yes, the mayor.
The mayor, the mayor's like any other councillor, yeah. I mean, how the mayor takes the vote is a matter for the mayor, but generally, it's a show of hands. It can be, can do it another way, but it's generally by a show of hands.
Yeah, oh, look, I'm all for the concept. I'm definitely for a bit more in community engagement and a bit more information on who is going to be living in the suburb for sure. The concept, definitely agree with councillor Fortune, the, you know, there needs to be some alleviation for people who live in Healy Heights and in Healy with the traffic. So having that access road back into Duchess Road, sooner the better, really, isn't it? And we certainly have a lot of old housing stock. And I do believe that, you know, the, the new generation want a, want new, they want, they want en suites, they want walking robes, they want pools and they want sheds. And I, and I have said this many, many times, but we need to be careful that we don't make these blocks too small because people come out here for a tree change. And they, they're sick of the little cookie cutter housing blocks that they have on the Gold Coast where they've got their cars parked on the street because they've had to make their carport into an extra living area. So we need to be careful that we don't recreate the mistakes of some of the city areas and they are landlocked. And, and looking at this Glider Port, we definitely aren't landlocked, so they're my thoughts. All right, so.
Now does it say yes?
I de, I definitely said yes, I thought.
It's up to the mayor, I think, just if you're just clearly calling it and showing hands, including the mayor, that's how you best do it.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for your concern. All right, so that now takes us to the item eleven, which is the corporate and community services reports. And eleven point one, which is the North West Queensland Regional Biosecurity Plan for twenty twenty-two, twenty-seven for adoption. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move Madam Mayor, that council receives and adopts the North West Queensland Regional Biosecurity Plan two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-seven for adoption, West Queensland Regional Biosecurity Plan two thousand and twenty-two to twenty-seven as presented.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, can I get a second for that motion?
McCrae.
Thank you councillor McCrae, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yeah, sure Madam Mayor, it's a very, very comprehensive plan that's been developed. It's been developed under the overarching control of the North West Queensland Rock, who have established the framework for all of the invasive pests and, and weeds basically that are, that are present in our, in our districts. Mount Isa is well represented in there, from feral cats through to all sorts of weeds that we have difficulty with. And I know that our administration and our staff have had a lot of input into, into the development of this plan from the Mount Isa local government area perspective. Thank you Madam Mayor, happy to support.
Thank you. Do any councillors have any, anything they'd like to mention?
Yeah, through the chair, what I like about the plan is that it's a regional approach that has been agreed to through the Western Queensland councils. And it has many, although we don't have, mightn't have exact similarities and different pests, we all can adapt to what we have locally. But the, it's seen as a cost-saving measure as far as identifying, pooling our resources for all those Western Queensland councils, it's been pretty well received and added to. And the, I guess an example, for example, of cooperation is the identification of things like wild dogs and the control of wild dogs in different areas, like depending on your seasonal variations, they may take off in certain areas and the councils can get together and say, well, look, we need to take care of things in one area or another. And I just like the teamwork, I guess, that the Western councils have shown on this one. And it'll go a long way to covering, covering over on what Mount Isa City Council need to do under the Act.
Thank you, any other comments on this? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. That now brings us to eleven point two, which is the finance overview report for December two thousand and twenty-two. Can I get someone to move the officer's recommendation, please?
Yeah, I'll move again Madam Mayor, thanks that council receives and accepts the December two thousand and twenty-two finance overview report as presented.
I get a second for that motion.
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, Deputy Mayor, would you like to speak on this one?
Yeah, thanks Madam Mayor. So just looking at through the report and the details, the revenue is tracking okay, a little behind, but we're just waiting for some water rates to go out in February and then to be collected. We're picking up, as an interesting point, we're picking up a lot of extra interest and we budgeted for it due to the increase in interest rates that is happening at the present time. So in fact, we've, we've doubled probably what we'd budgeted for at this time, which is a bit of a bonus for us. I'm sure we'll use it somewhere else, but there's, the expenses are tracking higher than budget at the moment, but I note there's a, quite a large depreciation lump sum there that seems to be way over budget at the moment. And perhaps if anyone's got any questions on that, we could refer that to the director. The, the rates, we've got the lowest outstanding amount of rates for quite some time, but we're still, still very high in the three hundred and sixty-six days category. And again, I'd just point out that, you know, these are very, very old rates that aren't, haven't been brought into council cash reserves yet. So we, we do need to keep focusing on that and I understand there's efforts underway to, to draw that in again. So cash at the bank's sitting at fifty-nine million at the moment, so we're quite in a solid position in terms of cash at the bank. And I'll leave the detailed reports that are attached for reading for everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, just through the chair, I would like some clarification on that depreciation, please.
Thank you Chilaia.
Through the chair, just to clarify, that's the first six months of depreciation that's been raised. Also noting that we just finished the audit for two thousand and twenty-three in November, that's when we got the sign off. And we rolled the file, the PCS file with the asset register into the system. So there was insufficient time to adjust the depreciation for assets that had been written off as part of the audit. So there will be an adjustment happening within the January, just to bring that back. Because what you're seeing at the moment, that amount is quite high, it's much higher than what we had, what should be charged. So the asset files has been, asset register has been rolled and then now the calculation of depreciation will occur in the system and will adjust. So just to clarify, what we're expecting for depreciation is around the seventeen million dollar mark. So we should be sitting on the halfway mark at the moment and we're slightly over.
Any other questions with this one? All right, all those in favour, and that's carried. Item eleven point three, which is Splashes' overview report for December two thousand and twenty-two. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
I'll move that the council receives and accepts the December two thousand and twenty-two Splashes' overview report as presented.
I get a second for that motion.
Second.
Thank you councillor Tully, councillor Coglan, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Just, the report's quite detailed, so all the information's in there if anyone would like to read it. But through the chair, I'd just like to ask the CEO if he could look into, I've had quite a few complaints from the public on the cleanliness of the pool, of the bottom of the pool. I know we do have a machine that gets put in every night, but we don't actually close the pool for any amount of time and I don't know whether someone works on the pool to vacuum that up after hours, like the deeper ends.
Through you Madam Mayor, I think that observation's accurate as an occasional swimmer. In terms of public pools, obviously, I mean, it can be a bit dirty at the deep end. There is a machine that is effectively a vacuum that works after hours when the pool's closed. We'll look at how that might be supplemented, but I think, I think those observations are pretty reasonable. So I'll come back to you with a more definitive answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, and can I just mention that the pool will be free on Australia Day, is that right? So anyone who is on Australia Day and you've got a day off, town pool entrance into Splashes is free. And also that will apply to the Mount Isa Day and the bank holiday as well.
In the twenty, twenty-third? In the afternoon?
Yep, so Mount Isa Day in the afternoon on the twenty-third, as Peter McCrae was saying, councillor McCrae was saying, it's from three PM, is it?
I think it might have been four.
Four? And I think ABC may be broadcasting live from Splashes to do the drive time, which is, which will be a lot of fun. So that's on Mount Isa Day, which is twenty-third of Feb. And will be free on the public, bank holiday, which is the twenty-fourth of Feb as well. Okay, so all those in favour, and that's carried. And that takes us now to, now I think I'm eleven point four, which is the environmental and biosecurity overview report for November twenty-two and December twenty-two. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Will you go to move councillor Stretton or do you want me to do that? Now he's worried about the wifi connection. Yeah, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the November two thousand and twenty-two and December two thousand and twenty-two environmental and biosecurity overview report as presented.
Thank you councillor, can I get a second for that?
Second.
Okay, councillor Stretton, thank you. Councillor Stretton, do you want to talk about this one? Okay, thank you, thank you councillor McCrae.
Environmental Services and Biosecurity processed a total of a hundred and forty service requests, searches, inquiries and complaints between November two thousand and twenty-two and December two thousand and twenty-two. Environmental Services have finalised the higher risk and non-high risk personal appearance service inspections for the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three period. Mobile food business inspections have been completed in December two thousand and twenty-two. And Environmental Services are currently investigating the flying foxes, which have been identified as little reds and have been plotted along Sunset Top Tourist Park through to the Stinky Creek Crossing on Mile Street and are numbered in the thousands. That's the update.
Thank you, any other questions or comments on this?
A couple of things, Madam Mayor, the wasted camel wheel, I know it's, the dump, the tip there is closed completely to everybody. There's no commercial waste going in there either, is that what I'm reading?
Um, yeah, there's some skip bins to be placed in Camel Wheel to address some concerns by DES about some of the things that were, were not happening out there. So they'll be able to pick up any commercial waste. I'm not sure if they're there now, I thought they were, but I can't confirm that, so.
Yeah, previously, we were opening it on by appointment, I believe, but that, that's all stopped now.
That's, that's stopped because there's been too many concerns about what has been dumped there and the volumes and the fact it's not necessarily being recorded correctly in returns to DES. So we've agreed with DES, with JJ Richards, there'll be the skips put there. They'll come back routinely into Mount Isa and go into the general waste and be recorded like all the other waste.
So I just wonder if that's sustainable going forward to not open it at all and if we need to do other things out there, like make some other arrangements with a, like a transfer station or that sort of thing, which we have spoken about in the past.
Yeah, we'll certainly review how it goes because JJ Richards' commercial service of it will cost us, so we'll have a good measure of the costs of doing what we're doing. Opening the tip and maintaining the tip has some considerable licensing and cost implications too. DES were insisting that if it's going to be opened, they had to have a waybridge installed and that would just blow any economics out of the water, would be exorbitantly expensive to do waste that way.
Yeah, there's just, I know there's an example in Corumba of a transfer station where they, they collect it and sort it a little bit and transfer it to the, to the waste in Normanton, I believe. Councillor Stretton might know more than me about that, but I would think that that's our, would have to be our focus going forward.
Well, the town has got the weekly collection of normal household garbage, so on top of that, there's not a lot of commercial activity out there. So we're going to see how the skips handle it and what the costs are.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And the other question I had was just around the cattle on the town common, there's no cattle on there at the moment, is that? Is that the case? Because there were some issues with the land being contaminated or something? Is that the case? Um, the because there were some issues with um the land being contaminated or something?
Through the chair, uh that issue has been resolved. So uh all the cattle has been moved uh to the Northern Territory and the owners are responsible for that. So there should be no cattle at the town commons at the moment.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chilaia. Okay, is there any more comments? All right, all those in favor? And that's carried. That takes us now to eleven point five, which is the economic and community development overview report for December twenty twenty-two. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the December twenty twenty-two economic and community development overview report as presented.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Councillor McCrave, would you like to speak on behalf of this?
I would. The team has been very have been very busy working on the preparations for Australia Day on Thursday. Um, we had numerous nominations that's been closed and we look forward to presenting those. Um, you know, we hope we get a good crowd to come along and support those people on Thursday. The Sign-on Expo is happening, our annual event, on the fourth of February to allow people, new residents, to come and see what activities are on offer in Mount Isa and to sign up for them. Um, the Hundred Year Celebrations, obviously a hundred years kicks off on the twenty-third of February, our birthday. Um, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank everyone that has been involved in the advisory committee. We had our last formal meeting as the advisory committee um yesterday, having made all the decisions. Um, I guess or informing the decisions of councils as to how the year would look and the different projects and things moving forward. Um, those people will be continuing on but more as a less formal working group throughout the year. So thank you to those people for giving up their time. And um Christmas Carols, we had that, that was a really great event. Um, the library did a great job there with their little performance and I know everyone that went along had a good time. And also um Camel Wheel Community Christmas Picnic, I think that was the first, the first one I've been to. Um, and I think everyone involved had a great day, that the children were very well behaved, they enjoyed it. And um yeah, thanks to the team for organising that.
That was awesome.
Through the chair, can I just ask the um CEO, with the calendar of events that's on our website, um would it be able to be a little bit more updated with all events in the community? I just know I went on there last week and it's the events that are on there, there's only a few of them. Whereas we all know in Mount Isa, you have Cloncurry races, you have Quambi, you have all your little camp drafts and that. Um, for someone new to town coming in, if they did click on that, they would think that there's nothing on. I know they're not council events, but they are events that are quite big in our community. So I'd just like that to be updated as soon as possible.
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, that that's fine. I mean, it can be done unless you enough councils had a had a worry with that. But yes, it can be done, recognizing that we may not get it absolutely right because we may not have all the perfect information, but can be done.
And can I please add something to that? There was a lot of discussion about that with the Hundred Year Advisory Group yesterday because we I know we've had a lot of issues with calendars and dates and getting it to work properly and make it easier for people to find. Apparently, a lot of the dates and events are listed on a um page called Discover Mount Isa, which is also a council page. So um we've asked for any, like, there to be clear links between Mount Isa webpage, which understand is a lot more difficult to access and adjust than the Discover Mount Isa page. So I asked if we could just have clear links if you want to click on something that it leads to the Discover Mount Isa page to make it easier for people to find.
Yeah, websites, corporate websites, particularly council ones, should be uh as uh user-friendly as is possible. And they're they're a big investment. I don't know quite where we're at with the city's one at the moment, but they are things to be invested in for those sorts of reasons. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just uh one thing just through the chair with the the economic development. I was wondering if we could table N W Water again, please? That seems to have gone missing.
Um, through you, Madam Mayor, if you like. I'm happy to put that on the agenda for the next round of workshops. In fact, that was the intention, so.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
We've um myself and Greg Campbell have had a couple of um really good meetings um just right before Christmas and just recently, so I'm happy to update on where we're sitting with that. Um, one of the questions I would like to ask is, where value are doing the Hundred Years to the Mount Isa rodeo? So is it, uh, this is the CEO, is it possible that we could approach the rodeo and see if we can get? Um, because we we haven't said we're sponsoring the rodeo yet, so that might be something we need to do sooner than later because we're, I I think if we're going to be putting money to an event, we sort of need to know, are we sponsoring that event? I don't know about your thoughts, but I'm.
Uh, ye- yes, if if we need certainty in terms of Hundred Year Celebrations, absolutely. Um, obviously would have budgeted and had clarity about that at budget last year.
It's it's definitely in the budget. It's just that um every year we it comes to council and it is a very close vote as well. So I've, you know, maybe that would be good to have that sooner than later.
Very, very happy to invite them in if that's what you want done.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, that'd be great. That was just mine. Okay, all those in favor? And that's carried. That takes us now to eleven point six, which is the Waste Management Overview Report from November, December twenty twenty-two. Would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Um, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the November twenty twenty-two and December twenty twenty-two Waste Management Overview Report as presented.
Thank you, councillor McCrave. Can I get a second for that motion? Councillor Stratten, you want to second it? Yeah, thank you. Uh councillor McCrave, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Yeah, I would. Um, November and December have been challenging periods for the waste management due to the breakdown of two vital machines. The Bow Mag and the Dozer were down for an extended time and prevented landfill from being compacted and worked um and worked correctly. This presents a compliance risk to council. The Department of Environment and Science were conducting a volumetric survey of the Mount Isa site. DES have raised concerns over the stockpiling of waste in the resource recovery areas. Domestic garbage collection, further education with community will be done so that the bins are not being presented for collection before six A M on the collection day and that bins are not overloaded. There have been a reduction in eye case for missed bins, so the message is getting through. Um, Waste Management are working closely with J J Richards to rectify rectify and resolve any issues that arise with commercial garbage collection. Waste Management will be changing the colour of the bin lids for commercial customers to remove confusion around what is domestic and what are commercial bins. Um, and yeah, that's me.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um I I passed to, I don't know if Chilaia's been away, but um uh there was an announcement by the federal government that every household in Australia was going to get a yellow top bin. Um, so I don't know how that is um going to translate here in Mount Isa um at the present time. So I just wonder if there's any sort of update on that in relation to our local government area.
Have not seen anything at this stage. That's fairly easy to say, but of course, we're in the process of looking at MRFs and all that. So we have got a a current process going. I don't know if it'll change that or or not. Um, but I don't know anything further about the announcement.
Yeah, I've had a an inquiry from someone in the community who was um wanting to know when they were going to get the yellow top bin. But um, yeah, so I just thought it'd probably be worth us researching that um announcement and just seeing what it actually means for us here. Thanks, yeah.
We we've got a lot of yellow bins, of course, up at the um the the tip ready to go, but it we've still got a bit of work to go to decide if the MRF's the future and how we fund it and get it built and so on, so.
Thank you. Through through the chair, that was my next question. Can we get a bit of an update of where we are with that MRF and how we're travelling with funds and where we are with the state government and the federal government?
Uh, thank you. Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, you will get one um at the next meeting, next round of meetings. Um, the tenders have closed and have been assessed and there is some work that Chilaia and her team are doing in in response to that. Effectively, some value engineering to get to a firm uh and best value price for the preferred tender. So that's a process that will unfold. Um, and that will inform the final report, which will address all of the issues ideally as best we can. That is the ca- the known capital costs, the projected operating costs, uh how the how it would be operated in terms of the operating model uh and the competing alternatives and how they all stack up from a an economic, social, financial and environmental perspective. So that decision is is pending. It the idea was that the the aim is for the February round of meetings to make a final decision. My view is that we will probably need until March or a special meeting in between to finalize report to give you the best information we can.
So that and and also that leads on to another question. Can we just make sure when we do get the the overall picture, it's not just we've awarded this tender thing because of these reasons? I'd like to see the whole lot. Thank you.
Exactly. I agree, yeah.
Because in in the past, we haven't.
Correct, and that is what needs to be addressed, absolutely. We we're now in a position to give you a final position as best we can because of tenders, we've got a a known capital cost.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, if that's uh last of the questions or comments, all those in favor? And that's carried. All right, that takes us now to eleven point seven, which is the Local Laws Overview Report for November and December twenty-two. Uh councillor McCrave, would you like to move the officer's recommendation?
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts November twenty twenty-two and December twenty twenty-two Local Laws Overview Report.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Tully. Uh councillor McCrave, would you like to talk on behalf of this one?
Um, yeah, I would. I think the um most interesting thing of this report was the pet registration numbers. They doubled in the um quarter two financial year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And this is attributed to the um MICC staff telephoning pet owners about their registration details to make sure their details were up to date. Um, I myself too would just like to personally congratulate the um staff there in introducing the three-year registration. I I think that's been a great thing for council. I know personally I like it. You can just pay it and not think about it for three years. So I'm sure that's helped with numbers as well.
Hmm, and that's great. Any other comments on this report? Okay, all those in favor? And that's carried. And that takes us to eleven point eight, which is the Library Overview Report for December twenty-two. Um, councillor McCrave, I'll hand back to you for the officer's recommendation.
Yes, I'd like to move that council receives and accepts the December twenty twenty-two Library Overview Report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded, Fortune.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Um councillor McCrave, would you like to um talk on this one?
Um, yes, like mentioned in previous reports, the library team have been out and about recently with the um Camel Wheel Community Picnic and also doing the um storybook presentation slash concert um at the Carols Event. I think that was really popular. Um, the Letters to Santa proved to be very popular with a hundred and fifteen letters going into Santa. Not sure if he wrote back or not. We might have to find out about that one. Um, Isa Images Handover is about to happen on the twenty-third of February for um Mount Isa's hundredth birthday. So that's been a great Hundred Year Project that the library's been working on for us. And I know there are a number of children that attended a summer reading club over the school holidays. I actually went to their little breakup last Friday and we um did some songs and games and different things and lots of fun was had by all.
That sounds wonderful. Any other questions or comments on this? All right, all those in favor? And that's carried. That takes us now to eleven point nine, which is Welcoming Cities, uh Rural Welcoming Community Exchange Programme. Um, would someone like to move the officer's recommendation?
Through the chair, I'd like to move that council accepts two particip- two participant positions on the Rural Welcoming Communities Exchange Programme, attending four localities in USA from April twenty-five to thirty twenty twenty-three and four localities in Australia in October twenty twenty-three. And that council nominate two council representatives to attend the Rural Welcoming Communities Exchange Programme in both the USA and Australia.
Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, councillor Coglan. Um councillor Fortune, would you like to speak on behalf of this motion?
Yes, thank you. Madam Mayor, the um the Rural Welcoming Communities Exchange Programme uh seeks to uh promote the um welcoming of immigrants and migrants into Australia. And uh some of those people not don't necessarily have English as a first language. And um the the initiatives that were uh originally formed in the USA um welcome people into rural parts of the country. And uh that was the Welcoming America um initiative. And um that Welcoming America has a grant to cover most of the programme expenses, including the flights, um internal flights in Australia, flights to USA, uh accommodation and meals. And uh the council just have to cover the additional meals and any programmes that are outside the uh um itinerary. So the uh the background of it is Welcoming Cities Australia has been working with Welcoming Welcoming America in the development of an exchange programme that sees selected councils participate in a number of learning and professional development opportunities, both here in Australia and in America. Uh, the first such exchange will happen in twenty twenty-three and Mount Isa has been selected as one of the four councils representing rural Australia. Um, the uh Rural Welcoming uh Communities Programme will build relationships between rural community members and leaders in the United States and their peers from Australia. Uh, the connections that form and information exchange will help participants adopt strategies to improve wellbeing among rural immigrant populations. Uh, there's sixteen leaders from eight rural communities in the United States and Australia will participate in the RWCE programme, uh which may include group webinars, peer workshopping, uh training and in-person community visits.
Thank you, councillor Fortune. Um, any questions on this one?
Yeah, through the chair, I am in agreeance with two councillors going, but what I'm not um I'm not in agreeance with is that the additional meals and the additional accommodation be paid by council. I think that should be paid by the councillors that that go to the event.
Um, can I can I just actually clarify with, because the recommendation itself is a bit ambiguous. So are are we sending two people to America or one person to America? Isn't it only one covered?
Two.
Two.
And and two are covered by?
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with the 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 background of the issue, so.
I I I thought he I thought he said one person was covered.
No, two, they got clarification on it.
Oh, okay, so so two councillors are um are paid for to go to America. And then, um, because it then goes that council nominate one to go and represent us in the USA. That's where I'm getting confused, see? And that council nominate one council representative. And then who's the who's the non-government organisation? What's that about? Council nominate one non-government organisation to go to USA and Australia.
There there are options through the chair, as I understand it, Madam Mayor, there's options to nominate a non-government.
Like a staff member, yeah?
Sorry, or even or even staff members too as well.
No, that makes sense. I'm just.
Yeah, so the um uh there was a um proposal there from the Community Action for Multicultural Society, that's CAMHS, um that has a a local representative that was considered. But the the my understanding of the role of Mount Isa City Council is that we we can support, um council has a role to play in the support through facilitation of CAMHS and programmes in Mount Isa. And councillor participation uh will also ensure first-hand reporting back to council and a future involvement in any proposals uh through the uh making the first-hand contacts and um networking.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I just clarify um with councillor Coglan, please? Um, the uh the way I read it here is a council participant themselves needs to cover additional meals and any additional accommodation. It's not not council costs. Um, councils only, sorry?
I must have, it's got participant organisations will need to cover, I I unless I've got something wrong.
Yeah, well, it says in the um, I think it's on page uh one twenty-two. It outlines the budget and resource implications and it says that um um all group meals are paid for by the the organisations that's developing the exchange and all the accommodation for five nights. Um, and then any internal and uh flights are all covered by the um the hosting organisation. Council's only cost is the welcoming cities premiership, premium membership, which we're, which we're doing anyway, which we've been, because I've been to a couple of workshops, um, for the, or at least one, sorry, to the welcoming cities, um, um, when they've had their, um, uh, attendance here in Mount Isa. So, um, uh, yeah, the, the, the cost to council is, is very minimal, yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that deputy mayor. Is there any other questions or comments on this one? Do we need to have a discussion on who goes or are we happy to do that at a workshop?
I'm, I'm happy to propose now while the councillors, um, attending through the chair.
Is that something we do now or do we wait?
You can do it now, there's no, no impediment to doing it.
Just, um, for the record, I, I certainly don't want to go. I, um, I have a commitment to be here for NZC day and that's my priority.
Through, through the chair, um, Mr. CEO, would this be an additional to the, um, motion?
You can either, either amend the motion or have a second part to it.
I, I just allow. I'm happy for it to have a second part to it and, and I'll nominate in the second part, um, deputy mayor Phil Barwick and councillor Peter McCray as the council representatives.
It sort of goes against what we just said though, because we're sort of nominating a non-government person as well to go. Aren't we?
Uh, we've moved the motion for two council representatives. And I'm just, uh, passing it on, we've mentioned, um, the, the NGO and, uh, it can be either or is my understanding. And I've, uh, selected council representatives for the, um, reasons I've mentioned previously.
Okay, so we would have to change the motion?
Yep.
And the motion would be, um, same as the first one, that council accepts two participants and that council nominate two council representatives instead of the last paragraph. If that makes sense to you councillor?
It was just a second motion.
So, um, the, the council nominate two council representatives and, and that part didn't actually name the representatives and, um, and if, if there's an addition to that, uh, motion, I'd just say and, uh, councillor, de- uh, deputy mayor Phil Barwick and councillor Peter McCrae are the council nomination representatives.
And, and, and I'm, I'm happy, happy for that to happen, but do, do we have to nominate it as a matter of public record or is this?
Um, well, in the absence of a policy or a delegation for, for one of you to, to decide it, it's, you could do it now by resolution or you're gonna have to do it at, at a later date by resolution, so.
Okay, just so you know.
Yeah, through the chair, I, I think it's important that we do it now because, and, and I'm, I'm willing, I've put in the express of interest to, to represent Mount Isa and I'd, I'd be very honored to do that and I'm sure councillor McCrae feels the same way. But, um, I think it's important that we get nominate those appointments, um, because otherwise there's a, a conflict of issue, um, um, issue that arises.
Okay, so councillor, would you like to, um, do we need to, because we already had a second.
Yeah, if, if everyone's comfortable, madam mayor, uh, you, if, as long as you're clear about the motion, I think you should be now.
I'm not happy to second the, the second part.
Rep- council representatives, yes.
Okay, would, would you just like, um, read, read the motion just again, just so we're very clear, clear?
I move that council accepts two particip- participant positions on the, uh, rural welcoming communities exchange program, attending four localities in USA from April twenty-five to thirty, twenty twenty-three, and four localities in Australia in October twenty twenty-three. And that council nominate, uh, councillor, uh, Barwick and councillor, uh, Peter McCray to attend the real rural welcoming communities exchange program in both the USA and Australia.
Can I get a second for that?
Seconded.
Thank you. All those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us to item eleven point ten, which is the development on land use quarter two overview report. Would someone like to move that officer's recommendation?
Thank you very much, madam mayor. I'll move the recommendation that council receives and accepts the development and land use, uh, quarter two overview report.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion? Sec- sorry, seconded Coglan.
Thank you councillor Coglan.
Sorry, um, madam mayor, I won't take up too much time with, um, council's, um, time with the overview. I'll just, uh, go through the, um, uh, summary, uh, this through, uh, development applications during the second quarter. Uh, council received eight development applications and approved five. Uh, this is the same in the, as number of applications is received from the previous quarter being eight and, uh, and an increase compared to the same quarter in the last financial year, which was three. Uh, the council received, uh, six boundary clearance dispensation applications and approved six applications during the quarter. This is an increase of the number of applications received compared to the same quarter last financial year, which was four. Uh, with the building applications, there's a total of thirty-five, uh, so thirty-six notice of engagements were received by councils during the quarter. A total of thirty-three building approvals were issued, uh, by private building certifiers in this quarter. Uh, this is an increase compared to the previous quarter being fourteen and, uh, an increase compared to the same quarter in previous financial year being sixteen. Of the thirty-three building approvals, there was a total of forty-seven structures for which building permits were issued. A total of building works approved for the Mount Isa local government area for this quarter was six point four million dollars, which is an increase of five point five compared to the same million compared to the same quarter last financial year. Uh, property searches, council received a total of ninety-two, uh, property search requests for the quarter. This is a decrease compared to the last quarter being a hundred and nine and an increase compared to the same quarter last financial year being seventy-seven. Uh, of the ninety-two requests, eighty-eight were for residential properties, four were for commercial properties and zero requests for certificates of classification occupation. Uh, land use and tenure, the, a total of seven, uh, council trust land tenure agreements were issued. Seven council trust land tenure agreements were surrendered and, and council endorsed one request for a liquor license compared with, uh, uh, and, sorry, completed one road opening enclosure and one survey plan. Um, during, uh, quarter two for the twenty-two, twenty-three financial year, council received a total of just over one hundred and forty thousand dollars in reserve fees. So, um, in summary, I guess Mount Isa is ticking over. There's been an increase in, um, in the, in the development around Mount Isa, which is good to see. It's, it's ongoing. Uh, it hasn't completely stalled or anything like that. So it, uh, shows that our community is, is, is sustainable and, and moving forward.
Thank you. Do we have any questions on this?
Yeah, madam mayor, I, I was just curious, um, one item there, um, seven C Isa Street is, is a heritage listed building. Uh, would that be the old courthouse or something, would it? Anyone know? Uh, the, where, there's, they've got an application and upgrade the air conditioning system, but, um, I was just wondering how many, yeah. It's interesting to see which ones are heritage listed. Yeah, thanks, thanks for, yeah. Um.
Um. Is it possible to get a little bit of an update on Centennial Place?
Do you, madam mayor, yes? That's all you can do right now.
Yeah, just a, uh, just a brief, how, how's it going?
Centennial Place, uh, the only real progress is the contracts have been let and, um, the, so the contractor is aware and is ordering the, has ordered the long lead time materials, but there's been no actual work on site. I don't expect them to start on site, the same contractor doing the, uh, basketball court and the fun park. Um, they'll finish those and move to Centennial.
All right, so it sounds great. And how is the fun park going while we're talking about it?
Very, very close.
You want a percentage then?
The, uh, watering the grass the day before the opening, I think that's.
Yeah.
The turf, I should say.
Um, I think one of the, the main outstanding issues was actually commissioning the chlorinator for the water, for the water features. Uh, they've got people on board to do that now. So that's the, the major hurdle, lots of tidy up work. I think if there was any danger that it was not going to be complete by, uh, February twenty-third, we'd start to look at ways of ensuring it could be open on that day, even if something had to be temporarily done and then fixed afterwards. So it'll be open and, uh, available, even if there was some sort of reduced capacity, but hopefully that won't be necessary.
Could I just raise, madam mayor, I understand the water fountain at the skate park's out of action as well. Would that be part of that, um, upgrade that you're talking about?
No, I'm not really sure. I'd have to check on that.
Okay.
Um, it shouldn't be, but I'd have to check it maybe.
We don't want our skaters dehydrated, uh, thanks.
No, all the plumbing is very interconnected down there between the pearl, the fun park, the skate park. Pipes run everywhere. I found a lot of pipes in interesting places when they were doing the upgrades. We kept shifting things and finding another pipe. So it could be connected.
Okay, I'll live with you. Thank you.
And, uh, look, this is really far fit, far out, but this is what my kids keep asking me. The water slide. Have we, um, any, have we commenced anything with that as yet?
No, no update on that as of yet.
That's okay. My kids keep asking, when's it been built mum? When, when, when can we go? So, yeah.
Uh, it might be worthwhile, um, the management of projects is in Cloncurry today, but I'll get, I'll get an update circulated around councillors as far as that goes.
No, thank you so much. I've put you on the spot there. Sorry to do that. Welcome to local government. Um, okay, is there any more questions or comments on this one? All, all those in favour? Okay, so that now takes us to, uh, next one, which I am. Eleven point eleven. It just, it, it's trying to take me somewhere else. One be a second. Um, which is the country. Yes, uh, eleven point eleven, Country University Centre preferred location. Um, councillor McCrae, if you'd like to move that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move that council endorses TAFE College as a preferred site for the regional university centre.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Barwick.
Thank you. Councillor McCrae, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Um, yes, I would. I'd just like to thank Brian Atharinos, um, and the team here at council and also Duncan from the CUC um, for working so hard to try and bring this project forward. We're still working with the department on, um, signing the contract. Um, the tight financial constraints and what we're working with leaves TAFE as our, um, preferred option and pretty much our only option. Um, although I would like to thank TAFE for making the, um, building available. I think it'll, um, it'll look great there once we've gone in, um, signed it all up and made it a designated CUC. And I really look forward to seeing this project, um, pres- um, progressing and, and being completed.
Definitely. I think it's, um, a wonderful project and I think, you know, at the moment that is an education precinct, so it just makes sense, um, there until we can, at such time we can get funding to build some, you know, their own home.
Uh, through the chair, yeah, I, I concur with those comments. Um, I think, um, this is a wonderful thing for Mount Isa to be able to, you know, advance our, our tertiary education, um, to another level. Um, and I know we've, we've probably got, um, you know, thinking that this is the start of, um, something bigger, but, um, you know, this, this will be wonderful. From all reports, um, it may well service, um, you know, two hundred to four hundred people, um, on, in a yearly basis, um, um, you know, being able to do their online studies and, um, participate in those sort of activities you need to for university courses. So I think, um, I think it's a wonderful advance. Thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, great, great for Mount Isa and potentially keeping, um, local kids here studying university courses. Um, uh, important to note that the site, um, wasn't the only site, uh, uh, the current site, uh, at the TAFE College wasn't the only site considered. But, um, with all of the, uh, things taken into account, uh, it probably is the best for the, for the short to medium term. Long term, there may be something else developed in Mount Isa, but, um, I'm very happy to see it up off the, well, on the way to getting up off the ground and, um, initiated because it's, uh, it's, it's gonna be great for Mount Isa as far as, um, you know, keeping those young people here with their families, uh, the ability for even, um, mature aged people to access, uh, tertiary education, um, and, and the, um, the flexibility, I guess, that's around the, uh, around the whole concept. Um, it's, it'll be very good for Mount Isa.
Thank you councillor Fortune. If there's no more comments, all those in favour? And that's carried. And that takes us now to item twelve, which is the infrastructure services reports, uh, twelve point one, purchase of G six Tempest and an A four Storm Street sweepers. Would someone like to, actually councillor Tully, would you like to move the, um, officer's recommendation?
Thank you, madam mayor. Um, the recommendation is the council approve the purchase of the G six Tempest sweeper for the price of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars excluding GST and the A four Storm Sweeper for the price of three hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars excluding GST.
Thank you. Can I get a second for that motion?
I'll second. Thanks, madam mayor.
Thanks, deputy mayor. Um, councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Uh, thank you, madam mayor. Um, there was discussion regarding the sweepers because, um, I'm not too sure if everyone is aware, but, I mean, they have a lot of, um, moving, um, mechanical pieces. So, I mean, they are high maintenance, but the team have, um, recommended that we purchase these two sweepers, so, um, and there is a twelve to eighteen month wait, so we need to get in and, um, um, purchase these as soon as possible to keep, uh, the town as clean as possible. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tully. Any other comment?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
And, and, and like you've said, this is budgeted full. So it's, it's, it's great that we, um, have this opportunity. All right councillors, all those in favour? And that's carried. Which takes us now to the next one, which is twelve point two, which is major projects overview report. I'll hand back to councillor Tully.
Thank you, madam mayor. The council receive and accept the December twenty twenty-two major projects overview report as presented.
Can I get a second for that motion?
Seconded Fortune.
And councillor Tully, would you like to speak on behalf of this one?
Uh, thank you. Um, just an overview, the following capital projects are underway and hopefully near completion with some of them. The family fun park, skate park, um, the concrete slab for the basketball court at Lions Park has been poured. Um, contracted to install the roof structure and the marking as soon as possible, Centennial Place. Um, the construction tender has been awarded, prelim meetings have been conducted with the contractor. Kitchen containers and toilet block tenders have been awarded and orders placed. Artwork and statue tenders have been developed and were going to market, uh, early this month. An air conditioning contract for the administration building has been awarded.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, through the chair, I'd just like to ask a question about the basketball court in Lions Park. Um, just for clarification, is it definite, is the roof definitely high enough for a basketball court? And what lines are we marking on the ground? What, are they NBA? Are they, uh, school or are, there's four different types of lines for basketball? I'm just asking what measurements we're doing.
That is an excellent question. Uh, I'll circulate the answer. I asked a similar question and was told basketball and netball. That's as much detail as I have, so within that definition of basketball, we'll find out which version of basketball it is.
Okay then, and the roof is definitely high enough for a basketball court?
Certainly hope so, but I better check that too so I can give you a, actually a definitive answer rather than it looks high enough or something like that. Um, the other thing, it's a very small point, but looking to stencil in the middle of it, uh, stencil not vinyl. Um, that the hundred years logo for when we open it, so that it just points out to people that's where we are.
Thank you.
Just through the chair, councillor Coglan, why would you ask that question?
Because I know, um, we don't want the ball hitting the roof.
No, no, I'm not worried about the roof. The, the three different things, is there that big a difference?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Okay.
For, for like, um, like it can't be NBA, but the other three, yeah, it's about, um, like a foot difference between them all.
Okay, very interesting.
I don't know the exact measurements councillor Tully.
I'm gonna say something now. What does Mount Isa basketball have?
Sorry?
What does Mount Isa basketball have? Uh, I'm not too sure.
They'd be the Australian rules.
Okay, oh.
A three point, uh.
Yeah, so you'd, you'd hope we'd go in line with that because obviously people wanna practice at this free facility that's available and then probably play in our basketball stadium.
Most of the, most, oh, sorry.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is shouldn't we go in line with that? So they can practice there and it's in line with the competition.
Yeah, most of the ones I've seen that they just put in, in like in suburbs that where people just play informally, um, it's usually just a Kiwi goes in, um and you don't often see much else, you know.
You have your three pointer line.
Yeah, well, you could do that, yeah.
You should do that.
Even see that, yeah.
Yeah, we definitely should do that. No one has a basketball court without a three pointer line anymore.
Go down and pop a couple, yeah, okay.
So I'm I just, I do believe with um councillor, uh sorry, just upgraded Renee Wallace. Um Renee being involved with it, I'm sure it it would be correct, but I just want it clarified, that's all. Thank you.
Well, it's getting a bit late now to change the ceiling height if we didn't get it right. All right, all those in favour? And that is carried. All right, now this is. What page are we on? Sorry, I'm just jumped on me.
Item thirteen.
One sixty-eight, that's one sixty-eight.
Sorry, it's. I think it might be my computer. Did I miss it? One sixty-eight, here we go. Is it just a? Okay, so that brings us to item fourteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Okay. Sorry about this. It's just not going where I want it to go. Let me just go back to here and then back one. For some reason. Um so that takes us to general business, which is not here, item thirteen, general business, which is nil. And okay, I'm here. Um so that takes us to item um thirteen, which is general business, which is nil. And item fourteen, which is a consideration of confidential business items. Yep, do you want to do that in confidential? Yeah, okay, so um we we do have two items in confidential business, so um time is now ten fifty-three and I will adjourn the the meeting for five minutes and then we will resume in um confidential. Thank you councillors. It's your chance to get a cup of tea.